Lord, thank you for the day. I thank you, Lord, for your grace and for your mercy. I thank you, Lord, for this meeting. I thank you, Lord, for each one that makes up the board. We pray, God, to give us wisdom and guidance. I pray, Lord, for each employee at Town Hall. I pray that you help them, Lord, as they go through day-to-day operations. I pray for each citizen of this town. I pray that you guide them and protect them. I pray for our first responders, for our police department. I pray that you help them. God, ever lead them. God, protect them in their service. Lord, we thank you for them. We thank you for all that you do and all that you're going to do in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item up is the approval for the agenda. Is everything suited everybody for the agenda today?
Motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so approved. Next item is the consent agenda for the approved minutes of February the 4th of the regular meeting and February the 17th and 18th for our budget retreat. And we'll say that that was a good success and a great meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And so ordered. This is our public comments section. You, this is an opportunity for members of the public to express items of interest to the mayor and city council. This is not a time to respond or act any necessary action. We take it under advisement. Speakers are asked to use proper decorum and do limited comments to no more than three minutes.
Get right on with it.
All right.
All right. Sorry, I don't really know. Well, thank you very much for allotting us a little time. My name is Linda Hagan. I'm the executive director of Studio Three Music School. We're at the street. This is Kathy Estes, who is the music director of Studio Three. So we wanted to talk a little bit about our next concert that's coming up May 30th. And it's a patriotic concert. It's the week after Memorial Day. And since there's no town celebration or function or anything like that really going on at that time. So we were planning to do this concert. And then Mayor Holman spoke to us about possibly the town collaborating with us and actually sponsoring the concert. And so I'm going to let Kathy tell you just briefly what type of event that would be because it would represent our town.
Yes. So hello, I'm Kathy. And every year for several years, Studio Three's done like patriot auto concert of some. So the first one we did was, I don't remember the year, but it's when we were all wearing masks. And we weren't allowed to go anywhere. But we did the first concert in the parking lot of Taylorsville Savings Bank. And it was a big hit. Everybody loved it. But it's been in my heart to do one every year since then, though it's been kind of small, but it's been really good. So, but this year, months ago, I felt like we needed to do a really, really excellent and large patriotic concert. And that is exactly what it will be. It's, it will happen at Daysaw in the First Baptist Church. And we expect it to be filled, which would be maybe four, 150. But it is a very almost, I would say, it's a collaborative concert because we have people from many different areas of the county taking part. We have, of course, our Studio Three orchestra and choral. But we also have a high school's color guard. And we have several different churches being involved. Anyway, it's going to be outstanding. And I'm not just saying that because I mean, I really think it's going to be outstanding. So the idea is Ms. Jordan Jones from Third Creek Baptist Church in Stony Point. She's going to be our narrator. And it's basically looking at four of our biggest wars. And just the message would be, let's remember how great America is. Let's remember how precious she is to us and the price that was paid for our freedom. And so we will have songs from almost different eras. So for instance, like we got Chuck Alchins from the Hit Light Center. He's going to narrate the entire Gattesburg Address to beautiful orchestra behind it. It's just going to be cries. That's beautiful. And we also have, hopefully, this part I'm not sure if I think happened, is on the back wall, we'll have pictures of those particular wars while the music is going on from that era. So it'll be very powerful. And for instance, World War II, I'm trying, and this is almost 100%. We've got, I've already hired a great trumpeter. And, but we're looking for a trio that's not like the Andrews Sisters to do the beautiful board from company scene. Do you know that? Anyway.
Yeah, you all remember.
There's company.
Thank you.
And you get the idea. So it's going to be really, really respectful. We'll do, the orchestra will do a few tunes like the military, all the branches of the military ask our wonderful veterans to stand during their song. And so it'll be, it'll be real honorable. But also there's be some joy in it as well.
Thank you.
So that's the idea.
Thank you.
Our, our theme is remembrance, renewal, and hope for the future. We believe, based on past performances, of which we've done many, the cost would be about $1,800 to make the whole thing. So we do some advertising, but if the town would, you know, do the sponsorship and also some publicity, we would attract people who have probably never heard our concerts. And, but anyway, it will be something that you can be proud of.
Thank you.
Based on Friday, May the 30th?
Yes.
And what time is that going to take place?
7:30.
And admission is free, by the way.
We'll probably take up a collection.
Yep. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Riley Oates. I work with the United States Small Business Administration, the Office of Disaster Recovery. I just wanted to go through our disaster loan program, make sure everybody's aware of, you know, what we have available. We have two types of loans. One is a physical disaster loan. From what I'm aware of, there's hasn't been much physical disaster in this town. But we do have economic injury loans, which is for businesses to cover working capital should they suffer a loss in revenue from a lien. And we normally see these things start to happen in five to six months after the fact. Our loans are as low as 4% over 30 years. There's no payments for 12 months, no interest accrued for 12 months. That's really the most important things about the economic injury loan. But if you guys have any questions, if you know anybody who, you know, might, might be interested in something like that, I'd love to talk to them.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Anybody else for public comments? All right, moving on. Our business items. We need to establish a public hearing. The town council will consider establishing a public hearing for voluntary annexation regarding the property located at 26 Shannon Park Circle. We have a motion to have a public hearing.
Make a motion that I have a public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the public hearing will be at Town Hall, 5:30 April 1st, 2025.
I thought they were full, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. All right, next item up is the urgent care lease discussion.
Yes, as we discussed at our budget retreats, I forwarded this lease amendment to Mr. Ryan Exall, the owner of Urgent Care Mountain View. I have not received it or been back, but I just wanted to go back over the lease agreement. If you had an amendment to it, it would require them to catch up on the agreement until March 31st of this year at the current rate of $750 a month. Moving forward as of April 1st, 2025, they would be at $1,500 a month. It's still well below market rate. They would move to a monthly rental payment instead of annual rental payment to the town. And then they would be required to open up a utility for local town to begin paying for life insurance services. So I'm still in, reading my word back from then on this lease agreement. And the town attorney and I will continue to discuss that and if there are any recommended changes or reapproval of this. Do you want to leave it?
Did you say that catch up on the rent?
Well, they're billed in an annual. And that up in the, in the rears, so we, they pay for the year prior in June every year. So this would, they would just have to pay up to this date, up to March 31st, to where this, before this lease agreement goes into effect on April 1st. And then, because then they would change to a monthly rental payment at a different rate. So then we would be required to catch up for the eight, nine months of the previous year's rate before we can move forward to the next, to the new rate.
Have we made the new lease agreement with the house? The previous lease agreement I had was.
It was a spot.
Yes.
It was started quite some time ago.
Yes.
So but essentially they're eight or nine months behind because they paid the whole year, right? Is that what you're saying?
Technically, but they did the whole year at one time. So they, they paid for the previous year every year.
And it's all, so they're all paying ahead of time, they're paying after the fact, all of them.
Yes.
It's probably something that I can get started.
Yes.
So we're appreciative of the urgent care and the effort that's put in to get the urgent care here. They want to stay here, and I think it's a good partnership with the town. However, they've stated themselves that they, they've done very well. And so this is time to move forward. So any other discussion?
Yeah, the lease catch-up on water supply?
It won't catch them up, but they would have to start paying for water supplies. And they would be required to open up a account with the town.
And that would be also a point of schedule first?
Yes.
Even?
Yeah, or whenever this gets a good thing.
Right.
Everybody satisfied?
Yeah.
All right, moving on to items three, the ABC building improvements.
All right, the ABC board came to you in the last two or three months and discussed with you the possibility of making some changes to the building itself. They discussed wanting to put in a roll-up door to the building to make it easier for their shipments from the LBB warehouse in Raleigh to their building. So we received two quotes from them. One was from a combination of an employee of the town who works at the surgery facility and an employee of chemical glass. They would be doing that as a side job for them. Their price was $12,000. They would receive one from Door Systems. Theirs, their price was, if they were going to put the door on the side, which would be on the main avenue drive side, $11,381. If they were going to put the door on the rear and add an eight-by-eights, 12 by eight, right, to you. But a small concrete platform off the building for the lift gate for the delivery truck. So the rest on that would be an additional $1,148. But we, the town and the ABC board would have to enter into some type of agreement with the adjacent property owners of the rear. If they were going to put the door on the rear, because then the truck would have to utilize access to their property in order to make shipments to the store.
Would that allow the truck to go, to pump it back straight up to the back of the door?
It would. It would. That would be, yeah, that's the thought process.
Right.
We would have to enter into some type of, for the property owner, for the trucks to have access to the property if you, if we had to do it on the rear of the building. Having it on the side of the building isn't awful because they pull into the side parking lot now and they drop the pallets in the side parking lot. So they can just usually do that and then roll the pallets into the side.
And I noticed that there'll be a ramp, there'll need to be a ramp put there because there's a step if you roll a pallet in the side door, you're going to have to.
Yeah, they would have had some type of. Ramp goes in, but I think, when talking with the contractor for Door Systems out there, that would be part of it, I think, part of the project. The rest would be. Yeah. Then there's a quote from Anna's awning to replace the awning on the front of the building. And that came in at $3,000. They are the company that put in the original arm of the building. And then the ABC board also got a crew from a mason, brick mason, to break in the door window on the exterior to the right of the double doors. So that would be the exterior office door that is not utilized. They would take out that glass door and break that in and then replace and repair some damaged brick around the building. The breaking in the door on the exterior is $3,400. And the repair to the damaged brick around the building is $850. They also received some different quotes, two different quotes for tinting the glass. The first one came in at $2,198.85. And that's from SMP Tinting. And then they got a quote from Suncle Window Tinning that came in at $1,200.85. And then an additional $331.85 for some kind of reflective material I would go over and talk about.
So these are not going to be like decorative? They might be, or are they just going to block out so you can't see them?
Uh, I believe so, yeah. Yeah, they're not going to be decorative, though. They're just. Black out the side. And maybe for you can't see it, see inside of it. Especially on the front or outside where they have the shelf behind the cash register.
Because when we talked about it, a year ago, we were talking about having Grant at Elon Designs do something that had like a mountain scene and could incorporate the signage that was in the windows to make it look neater and better.
I believe they have been in communication with them and he just hasn't sent them.
Did they discuss paying with them or?
They have discussed that, you know, but. The doories will be put in and replaced and, you know, before they start paying that, with the payment, so.
All right.
Yes, so what, if you, so I, and are you wanting to make a decision on any of the quotes you see for any of this work for the ABC building?
The double door on the side of the building, I think would make more sense sitting behind the door. Because if you get into a agreement with the landlord, they can break that at any time they want to. If they've got something going on and the truck can't back up in here, then you're back in the same situation you're in now. We own the property on the side of the building that we bring the truck in. And I've been seeing them unload and it'd be a lot better if they could take a lift and lift it down and get it in instead of doing box by box.
Right.
I think they could potentially probably save on some labor costs as well when you just take someone person, the driver or whoever, just take the pipes and sit down and they can do it from there. So that's the saving drive of that, the bigger door, not do it near the side door. So. Do you want to do it first?
Let's do it first, yeah. So let's talk about the, let's do the door first.
So the double door on the side?
Yeah, the roll-up door on the side.
I like, I like a motion to look forward to that.
Second.
Which, which quote? The Door Systems or the.
I don't have second.
It was not sent on official printout, it's fair, but it's sent to you. I would recommend that we go with the actual company, Door Systems.
Yeah, because the two guys on the side, are they bonded? Or they ensure that if something goes wrong?
I'm sure they are, but they were more expensive.
Yeah, I was wondering. Yeah, I was wondering.
Obviously, we said, motion to.
Door System? Yes. And on second?
As she said.
So you're willing to motion for the Door Systems to be $11,381. Is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
And the other second, are we all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right.
I, can I just make a blanket motion on the next? Because I can make a motion that we table these to the next meeting where we have some other quotes.
Okay.
Some more information on the, on the window tints and the oomings.
Okay.
There are a motion, some of them.
I made a motion.
Second.
All in favor of the table and the rest of them to the next meeting?
Aye.
Just a minute. That's getting just the window, not the blocking the door on the office door. That's not part of that.
I think she said the oomings.
I just said oomings and windows.
Okay, excuse me.
Okay.
Oomings and windows next time.
So we do the brick. So the next item, let's do the brick window and no more filling.
Right. Right.
You're going to make a motion to accept that?
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so now.
And if we get those two things done, then we can proceed with paint and other stuff as well. These things need to be completed before you go to the jury, right?
Yes.
Yes, I don't see anything in my notes about the cost of that.
Which one? The brick you're talking about, breaking up?
To be at the.
Yes.
To be in the engineer package.
Oh, in the end.
That's what it is.
In hand.
It's a hand.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Now we want to table the window covering and, you got that ready? You have a motion for that?
She, she.
I have a motion, sir.
All right, let's vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any of you opposed? All right, so, all right. That's all of the ABC group.
Yes.
Item four is the street improvements bid discussion. Mr. Aaron?
I just got some information for you. Right, I have, yeah. So this came in, it's, it's, this literally came in on, she was on the third floor. So. So what was in the packet was the part of the project cost estimates that Westen Solutions done. This is on the one half file, I mean, the streets and so on. As I mentioned, it's a good for the first. We took bids, we got one bid the first time, so it's put back out the bid. We got two bids the second time. JT Russell and Sons Incorporated, a conover and Country Boy Landscaping out of State Store, turned in bids. JT Russell's bid was incomplete and had to be dismissed. We, and Country Boy is the only active bid that we received. As you can see on the bid tab, it was substantially higher. I contacted Todd Teague with Westen Solutions after getting the bid capulation. And basically, the sidewalk part of the project was under budget by both contractors. The street pavings was the part that was over budget. Todd reached out to JT Russell to begin with, letting him know that their bid packet was incomplete. It was missing for the five items required. He apologized for that. He had been under weather and it was a rush to get the package together. And it was just a favor on his part. There's no other way for him to be dismissed. And he understood this missing. Country Boy was then technically the only bidder on it. They were over the budget. Mr. Teague reached out to them because within contract, we had the ability to negotiate the price with them. There was two options that was put out there. Well, there were multiple options put out there. But Country Boy came back in off the bat and reduced their price by $150,000 on the street pavement. And then the second option came in that they would be willing to, if JT Russell's willing to subcontract through them, they would be willing to contract with JT Russell to do the pavement based off of JT Russell's prices. And then, of course, they would apply 10% over a fee for doing what for subcontracting. I received this letter in, actually, when I have a room, I checked my email and it was in there. So Country Boy has agreed to subcontract out to JT Russell. JT Russell has agreed to be a subcontractor to them for this project. And it is Todd's recommendation that after negotiation that we award the contract to Country Boy, which would total $1.21 million for this portion of the project.
To be clear, on the 1.2, is that the sidewalks on West Main and the street?
And the street.
For Fairway, Trinity Forest, Wing, Meadows, and 470 Road?
Yes. We also put out a bid, this little side strip here where.
Where the tree was standing.
No, the.
Oh, where the big dip is.
Where the dip is. That, that is clean and all that up and, and brick surface in that area as well. That portion of the, was. $57,100 for that section.
Okay, and?
So that's not on the sheet?
Yeah, it's on, it's the post-pavement. It's in with the sidewalk.
Okay, 50.
Sorry, the page just got, number E, the page just got back.
So who was number one?
So it was a 57, 54?
E is.
It's the.
Is it Russell going to be doing it or Country Boy?
Russell, Russell will be the subcontractor.
Your contract with the, with, with Country Boy would be.
And they're stuck.
Or something.
JT Russell.
Yeah. So they're working together.
How much is the money?
$1,000.
So with. So it cut the tolls.
I would think it would be.
Why?
We have one point five.
Yes.
But then that leaves us almost three to slop.
Well, we got the whole project into the cemetery to cover ourselves.
And when are we gonna grind it, can they grind that root out while doing this other?
We discussed that with them, or with, uh, Andy, that does our patchwork. When he came, he, he was unable to heat it up and take care of it that way. We are like to cut it out and cut the root out and then build back. So it will not be as easy of a job as we first thought it would be, but it is on the list of products to do. So we'll get to that.
We have to. We have a motion to approve the bid.
We have a motion for that.
Motion to approve the bid by Country Boy.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
One point two hundred, one point two hundred and ten, three hundred and two dollars and fifty cents.
Yes. Alright, all in favor?
Uh.
All opposed?
When will they start?
Alright, that's okay, when will they start?
The contract allows them to begin the year to complete the project.
Oh, to complete it?
Yes, yeah.
That's cool. No, that's good, that's eight months.
That makes sense.
We had a woman, almost did hit me the other day, now she's in the street. Cause she has no question why, she's poor and alone.
Did I say which one they're gonna start at, which one they're gonna do first?
They did not, um, the reason, the reason for taking an extra time, because a lot of contractors are earmarked projects already in line. And you either get an assinoff price or you have to get put to the problem with it. Or they allow time to work it even. The sidewalk project, according to Todd, probably will take two weeks for them to complete the asphalt. Shouldn't take that long either. So as soon as they get here, it's gonna be kind of a lame thing to work. But we can communicate the sense of urgency.
Yes.
I mean, I was impressed that they were, cause I was thinking you were saying that it has to start for a case, you're saying they're gonna make a leave at night, that was not really planned.
It was not a little after the wedding, you meant with the, uh, the holiday. You know, they were awarded in October, they didn't start until a month ago and they pretty much had four.
Aaron, is that awesome, moving the bid, that will be?
Yes.
That will be a blessing, man, that's fixed.
Any other discussion? What's going on? Uh, number five is the Studio Three concert, uh, town council considers sponsoring the Studio Three concert in May. Ladies, you've been talking about their public comment on the studio.
Same. Yes, and they did the most better job than I was, so I don't think I have to, um, say anything else about that, but they are requesting a sponsorship from the town. And they're about eighteen hundred dollars for it.
Before you have eighteen hundred dollars sponsor, Studio Three concert in May. I'm blocking that, we have a motion.
Is that set in a precedent, a precedent, say that other people come in and ask for eighteen hundred dollars because I thought we weren't given but fifteen or, um, there was a number that were given to all other people that came and asked for?
To weak budget, you can spend whatever. For that.
Yeah, you don't have to give the whole amount, but go ahead, Jack.
I said, we have money budgeted for Studio Three.
Fifteen hundred?
Correct.
Alright, once again.
Christmas.
I can give a last. It's five hundred for seven Christmas, um, the last request outside of normal budgeting that was received was for the Juneteenth celebration and they were giving fifteen hundred.
Well, I know we spoke about it in our retreats and, you know, the retreat we had about, you know, trying to get more events in town, you know, that people can back party. So.
Being that it's gonna be a paper guy.
Yes.
It's all being.
To bring people together, um.
I make a motion that we, uh, that we sponsor.
Make a motion, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you put a dollar now?
About eighteen hundred.
Any opposed? There's none, so there's no one.
Could, will it be listed as like one of, in the little thing that you came up with, where we about thinking events at the ham or would be listed as one of those events in there as part of that?
Uh. No, because that, that's more, um, kind of towards the main things that we sponsor and are heavily involved in the, uh, having a lot of, just asking to be sponsored.
Any other questions? Comment. Alright, moving on to the staff report, um. You have a question for me?
Good, I don't have a whole lot, uh, I brought this top in, this was the gallonized lot from the week from, uh, Friday that popped up. I shouldn't say it was fairly deteriorated, we got lucky that we were able to patch it, uh, black, but there's more of an issue with it than, than just patching that back. That was, it wasn't water main, thank, well, I'll say thank you. It wasn't sixteen water main running out through here, the issue to have that Todd's gonna bow up at the intersection and runs down and just runs to the old hill. That's the only, the only person or the only place to service all that line. So at the end of coming weeks, the plan is that we will come in to, basically the grass area of town hall, the silver line mark that's right there under the sidewalk there. We'll come in there and dig that out and put new surface line off of six inch to feed the jail and go back and cut this off at the corporation and cap it that way, that particular pipeline causes any future issues.
Still pressure, well, it's still, you're gonna cut it off the source?
Yeah, so we're gonna cut off the source so none, we won't have any future issues with that particular line, we'll live away with it altogether. Yeah, we also during that portion will run a new tack for town hall, the existing tack is galvanized tack one again. So the wall were already dug out right there, be the best time to go ahead and completely tap in. Hopefully the old tack is gonna be located on this line somewhere within range of four or five, we can cut it off and cap it as well. We're also gonna repair the fire hydrant right here beside town hall because it leaks. And if it ever gets used, it, it would be near impossible to stop the leak on it again, so we're gonna be making repairs to that. So that's a major project coming, um, in the next few weeks for this area. I mentioned the bids on that, the, uh, Earl's Street and Sidewalk project, the Paul Fane project, I heard by today, they are done with the whole sixty-four ninety size. So they have compensation all the way up to sixteen now. So the issue is that the entire force line has been installed. And then, remember how long it takes for materials to turn in, they'll completely, uh, not station, uh, rehab there as well. Other than that, uh, that's all, that's all I think of it along, you know, a lot going on, you know, busy, uh, few days.
Fire hydrant near the corner, was that part of the?
The fire hydrant in the corner was struck by a tractor truck, um, out of Canada. They were making a right turn, well, they have a reason to go on to the mountain road, had no clue where they were at, where they going, struck the fire hydrant. And contacted the insurance company now about getting, um, reimbursement for that. But when they struck it, they, they worked the hydrant, something to, to add to the place. It also created a leak on the service line for the hydrant, which is why they had to dig out to the road, uh, so they were able to dig out and make that fix.
I saw that truck, when he turned, after he turned, he was going down the lines, he was trying to turn on four of that and then he couldn't, so he backed up and went straight.
Hopefully the circle back around.
I just, I just kept pulling this on the watch.
Uh, but yes, that was, that was all them, shot fire hydrant, that was, that was.
He also took out the historic sign that was in that headroom. That was the sign for the historic district. Well, that's why the truck was all on the.
Good.
Yep.
Alright, Mr. Aaron.
Uh, yes.
I, I do think, good, we do a good year for two thousand years.
Before anything, sorry, yeah. Go ahead, uh, you don't have anything?
No, no, just that, you know, it's my last official meeting.
We want to thank Miss Yolanda for all her years of service, uh, twenty-seven years.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-seven years, she's only retiring at the end of March, so let's give her a round of. We appreciate all you've done and, uh, you've been here for a short period of time.
That's just down to you, please.
Seriously, thank you, um, no, no, no easy task and, um, she has a request, uh, she'll do a fine job. Alright, Mr. Aaron, go ahead.
It's a quick, uh, website update, uh, I've heard they've sent me emails and that they've almost got, uh, got our new homepage finished and they're working on a different, uh, media cast and things like that. I think I mentioned in one of my weekly reports to you all that, uh, they should have a test lead that they'll have available soon, that, that way, uh, we can send that out to you all. Go and, and look at it as they're making, um, improvements to it and, you know, make recommendations on that before it's complete and it goes live. Uh, we did meet with the architect, uh, a couple of weeks ago about the feasibility study for, um, a new pump works facility and some updates at town hall. So, um, he's supposed to be getting us some schedule work sometime this week to look at that, see if we want to move forward with that project. Uh, we did receive word from North Carolina Leaning Municipalities that, um, they're gonna do a way with their trust fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, which, uh, is what we have our town medical coverage for. So we're gonna have to look at entering into, uh, contractor medical coverage over the different vendors. So, uh, staff have worked really hard, uh, this past week, um, reaching out to different vendors, discussing with them and getting them to work on sending us quotes on what, uh, their benefits packages look like. And as they are, what type of cost that's gonna have to the town. And so we can start bringing those to you and having those discussions.
And that's it, we're gonna end that, mm?
Uh, June thirtieth.
Sure, okay. So they're up to it, or something?
Yes, so we, uh, it's a sensitive issue to that.
Hey, can you have me, uh, can you have me idea of how many cities in town do you use that, uh, service, uh, lead?
Um, I do not have the exact number, but it's a lot because there's been quite a stir, um, uh, several different listeners, people, um, in the same position that we are, so that, uh, we are not alone.
Was, was there a reason given that we found the business?
I think that, uh, what I'm hearing that the, uh, the lead wasn't going very well with the trust fund and its medical covers prior to contracting with EDNA. And then since contracting with EDNA, uh, that communication and just, uh, the headache of providing has, um, grown quite large, so they decided to get out. Uh, I've been discussing with Monroe about, um, our, uh, planning and development and how we're gonna, uh, look forward come July with, um, having that duplicative transition path. So something he and I are working on, uh, I've mentioned to you all before, um, we're gonna have to develop our own planning board in order of adjustment. Uh, it's gonna have to be effective come July first, so I'll be, uh, putting out something on our website and social media for anybody that's interested in the town of Taylor's Pool. That wants to serve on the planning board, um, come July first, so we'll sort of find out, get some people to sign up for that. Uh, we did receive official word, as I've, I'm sure you all have seen on the news, that the Indian plant is closing, uh, at night. We're required to send that to all, uh, local, uh, officials in the area, so that's gonna, um, cut about fifty-eight jobs from the county. Surrounding the areas, but it's, uh, sad news, but I'm sure the new economics manager with, uh, the county and, um, is obviously working pretty hard to get, um, a new, new company in that spot. The Taylor'sville Apple Festival Incorporated, uh, brought by a check, uh, just a little while ago, in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. And that is for, um, all of the vendor fees that they collect for the Apple Festival, so they brought that to have us present to you all. So, um, so that is their, our vendor fees for that festival. And they are requesting that for the, uh, seventh April Taylor'sville Apple Blossom Festival to be held on, um, Saturday, May third, from nine AM to five PM, that the, uh, town of Taylor'sville, um, continue their annual sponsorship in the amount of one thousand dollars. I believe they would buzz in for that every year, so definitely, yeah. Um, and one last thing, uh, please keep, uh, Chief Mike, the Saxon, your prayers, he's, uh, father passed away yesterday. So, uh, that is why he's not here, um, he may, he may out of office the rest of the week, um, both mom and his family, so just keep him in your prayers.
Nathan, did we send something to the town?
No, we were playing too.
Yeah, not yet, but we don't have a good intention, so yeah.
That's all I have.
Alright, so anyone from the council, have anything, any updates, anything they have?
Well, I want to thank, uh, what's your name, Aaron, for all the work he did on the, uh, dry, water line, I mean, the sidewalks and the street improvement. Uh, it's been a long process and I want to thank Jeffrey Youngmore, our past representative, for providing that money to the town of Taylor'sville so that we can get the sidewalks on the west side of the street improvements.
I want to say that I enjoyed the budget retreat that we had, um, it was very eye-opening and learned a lot and very productive as far as focus on what needs to be accomplished and goals going forward. And seeing that, um, we're on the same page, you know, that, that, that brings us together and gets us going in the right direction for the future.
And I would like to add that in addition to that, um, retreat that we had, the strategic planning of kind of mirrors, we're finding out that what the public will mirror is what we had picked out in that, uh, we're finding out that what the public will mirror is what we had picked out in that, um, retreat. And so therefore we do have a clear path forward and I think we made huge progress and we made a giant step tonight, uh, improving these projects and getting them on the way, so. And I'm very excited about next week, yes, in the next trip, so.
Well, the council will be going to Warhol for a major, uh, evening conference on Tuesday and Wednesday next week.
No, next week.
Excited for that.
Next week, yeah.
So, yeah, they had a lot of good ideas, a lot of, um, vendors there, a lot of, uh, yeah, it's, it's a good, well-rounded, um, conference to find a lot of information, a lot of grant opportunities, um, just plethora of, of things that, that, uh, you can learn there, so it's, it's.
Plethora.
Yeah, that's a big word for me, okay.
I, I was practicing all day.
Alright, anybody have anything else?
Exciting times, and thank you, uh.
Yes.
So after the meeting, we need a picture of you.
Well, I do have my camera out because I thought you might wanna take a photograph of Ms. Yolanda on her eyes. Her eyes, we, and maybe introduce our new collection. I know people, I'm saying, oh, I want to, but, um, that would be wonderful.
Alright, so we went to a work session, but.
We can do our, we can take it.
Big news, big news.
Alright, the next, uh, item is our work session will be Tuesday, March eighteenth, uh, this year, two PM. Here at the Town Changers. Um, the next regular meeting will be April two, April first, at five thirty here at the Council Changers. So I gotta get a little head set with that.
I swear to God, it's.
But, uh, do we have a motion due here, Aaron?
Motion.
So, did we have?
So good.
Alright, all in favor, Mr. Aaron?
Aye.
Any opposed, stay here.